You can't see us?
I can now, but I know what you did, but I can now.
This is really weird.
It seems like it's asking people for a password. I'm not sure what's going on.
Yeah, like I went black again when Tony started speaking. I think I only, I think I only can see.
Can you see?
I can only see you when you start speaking. When anyone else speaks, or when no one is speaking, my, my screen is completely black.
Okay.
Hey Sean, uh, you, you may want to check your view and see, uh, if did you change it?
Okay, I'm on gallery now.
You're on gallery?
Yeah.
And you all see if people are in the meeting or not? I can't see any of that stuff.
I can see everybody.
I see everything.
Can you see if the attendees are present?
I see all of the panelists and I see the attendees.
Okay, I can't see anything.
So it can just be your view.
I have, what do I have? I just have gallery view. And you can toggle back and forth between speaker view and gallery view.
Yeah, um, Will and Greg, their screens are, their blocks are black on mine. So is Gina's and Albert and Ruben, um.
So mine's just black on, on purpose. I'm not videoing.
Okay, alright, no worries. Thank you, Albert.
Greg, you didn't get your hairs done today?
I did. They're all short too. You showed, I showed it to you shortly.
You, you want to save it for later?
Okay. Sean?
Yes?
Chairman Atkins?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of our agenda?
I do. Thank you, Albert.
Okay, great.
Now, I don't see staff's recommendations on here. It's just the case numbers and, um, we must have breezed through this quickly because I have item number one, item number one, item number two, item number three, item number three. Should that be one under old business and then two, three, four, and five under new business?
Um, yes, we can, we can do it that way. So item number one, but before we get to that, I just wanted to make you aware that staff is going to recommend their furlough on the old business of the short-term rental. That was actually, uh, held on September 19th of 2019. And a public hearing has already been held for it and we talked about it in our work session. And wanted it to come back before you all for tonight, but, um.
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
Yes.
So that might, we might want that, what you're saying to be a part of the record.
Okay.
We have not officially started the meeting, so let's get to that when we get to that agenda item under all business, okay? So we are ready. It's 7:11. I'm sorry?
Kimberly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Is there a way that you can change the settings on this meeting to not require a password? Do you know how?
Um, no, I don't.
And Sean, I got booted off and I just came back. You're, you are wanting to reorganize the agenda. Is that what you said somehow?
No, uh, looking at the agenda, um, I've got item number one and then I go to item number one, I guess it's item number one of the new business, and then it goes two, three, three. So I'm assuming that that should be one, two, three, four, um, under new business is what I was stating.
Okay, alright.
And Kimberly, this is Steve Rothman, my client who's the applicant in the first case, just texted me. He's got the link, but he can't, he says he.
Could everyone who has a mobile device, please put it on mute, mute, or vibrate, or shut it off, please, before we start the meeting?
Uh, I'm trying to get the public password removed for IT. Apologize.
Okay.
The webinar has started, but we have not officially called the meeting.
Okay, I can see Will now.
Okay. Um, IT was able to remove the password that was placed on it for public entry into the call. So everyone that has a copy of our public notice that was placed on our website, they should be able to get in without having to have a password.
Kim, what are your muting privileges? Are you able to mute all of the guests?
Yes, I am. Should be able to. Oh, excuse me, yes. Everyone is muted. Sean, you're on mute.
Are we still handling public comment the way we've done before for the Zoom meetings, or has that changed? It was the call-in, I think Anthony would call. Are we still doing it that way? That's the process?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also, we have a listing of community members that have called in advance and they may be on this call and so once we call their names, we will allow them to speak once, um, the item comes up on the agenda that they're interested in speaking, speaking for.
Okay.
Sean, do we have a time limit for each, uh, speaker? I, I can't remember if we had time limits or not.
Um, for public hearing, each side is allotted 15 minutes.
Okay.
Um, other than the applicant. The applicant also has an opportunity to rebut.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
So are we ready to proceed?
Yeah.
Did every, was everyone able to get into the meeting? Okay.
There are 19 persist, uh, participants, 14 panelists, and five attendees.
Okay. Excellent, so, um, alright, it is currently 7:16. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sean Atkins, Chair of the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I'd like staff to please sound the roll call to establish a quorum.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Todd?
Here.
Commissioner Fan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lovett?
Pat's on mute.
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
I'm here.
Commissioner Miller?
Will's on mute.
Sorry about that, here.
Commissioner McKnight?
Here.
Commissioner Bryant? Commissioner Fields?
Mr. Fields is on mute.
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw, you have a form, a quorum, excuse me.
Thank you. Um, before we go to our moment of silence, I would like to acknowledge and recognize that it seems that we have a new commissioner. Um, I've not yet had the opportunity to meet the commissioner, um, that would be Commissioner Joseph Fields. So, Mr. Fields, we'd like to welcome you to the commission. Um, and having done that, I would also like to say that it is customary, um, and it is a part of our, um, process that we also would like to thank the outgoing commissioner for his or her service to the city of East Point and the residents and this commission. And so would that be, let's see here, is that Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, um, Kim, if you would please note and have staff to follow up with you on this. Usually we like to do some type of commendation for outgoing commissioners. And so although we're doing this remotely through this electronic and digital platform, I would not like for us to lose that tradition, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, um, ladies and gentlemen, those who've joined us this evening for our meeting, I would like and ask that you please join us in the moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, commissioners, I entertain a motion to adopt our agenda as presented with the correction of, with the correction of, um, item number four under new business. Is there a motion?
Wait. Chairman?
Yes.
Staff has several recommendations, um, for the agenda to be revised.
Okay, we will hear staff's recommendation and then, and then after which I will entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman. Um, staff has a recommendation that item under old business, item number one, case number 2019 dash 006 dash 08. The applicant seeks a text amendment to add definitions and that pertain to short-term rentals to section 10 dash 2003, as well as add such uses as permitted uses to be applicable to the zoning district, that that be deferred to the September 3rd, 2020 special call meeting. We also have another recommendation that item number three of new business.
Okay.
Item number.
While you're doing that, Kim, before you do that, um, I think that these things have already been advertised. So we cannot wipe them from the agenda. So as we get to those things on the agenda, staff would then make a recommendation to defer those items. And then that is how we will handle those agenda items. But because the agenda has been, this has been advertised, then we have to keep them on the agenda and we will dispose of them by doing a deferral or staff's recommendation.
Yes, uh, Chairman, and for item number one under old business, I, I would recommend that that one stands.
This is the time, this is the time really, Kimberly, to be recommending any changes in the, in the order of the agenda, not making staff recommendations as to particular items on the agenda. If you have a recommendation that the order of the agenda be changed, then the, the commission can consider that and change the order, but now it's not the time for staff recommendations on particular agenda items.
Correct. So we're, so, so the adoption of the agenda is really about the order. So, um, if there's something that staff would like for us to move, for instance, if you'd like for us to hear new business after old business, that will be something that the body could consider. But it's been advertised, so we have to have it on the agenda. When we get to that item, we would then hear staff's recommendation and dispose of it accordingly based on, um, the will of the body.
Okay, uh, may I, um, ask a question?
Sure.
Of attorney, um, Linda, this item number one, the text amendment for the short-term rental, it was actually properly advertised on September 19th of 2019. It was tabled at that time. We talked about this item in the work session, therefore it hasn't been advertised because we didn't have to advertise it because it was tabled. And so what I am trying to, to do is to untable it for the September 3rd meeting. So what is the most appropriate way for me to do that?
Most, you cannot do that. The most appropriate way is to leave it where it is. And then when staff, when the Planning and Zoning Commission requests staff recommendation with respect to old business number one, then you can make a recommendation that it be deferred, uh, to a date certain. And then it's up to the Planning and Zoning Commission to then vote as to whether or not it will be deferred as recommended by staff. I understand what you're saying, that it has already had a public hearing, but at that public hearing, Planning and Zoning Commission voted to defer it to tonight for further consideration. And so it has to be treated as if it's, well, it, because it is on the agenda, it has to be dealt with like any other agenda item. It can't just be sort of administratively moved.
Understood, thank you very much.
Okay, um, commissioners, um, with the exception of the numbering under new business, so what you see on the very last item in the new business, number three, that should be number four. Um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt the, uh, agenda as presented with the, uh, numbering changes made.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Fan, that we adopt the agenda with the changes that have been, um, presented. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The agenda has been adopted. And, um, item number, the last item of the new business is item number four. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve our July 16th, 2020 meeting minutes.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd and second by Commissioner Lovett, that we approve our July 16th, 2020 meeting minutes. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Our July 16th, 2020 meeting minutes are approved. Our next agenda item are presentations. Um, staff, would you please introduce our first presentation?
Yes. One, one moment, please.
Okay.
Tony, do you have a copy of that item?
I do. I can't share it though. I just sent a chat to the group. Um, I have no controls to share anything.
No problem. Let me grant that to you now. Okay, you should have sharing capabilities.
No, I don't see anything that says share.
Okay, you should be able to share.
No, I can't. I'm sorry. I see chat raised hand and Q and A. I see nothing that allows me to actually click the share button.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm listed as, I guess I'm a panelist, but I'm not sure. I can't see myself or anything.
Okay, let's see. One second. Okay.
I mean, it looks like.
Okay, you should be. Good, you were listed twice on the panelist list. You should be able to share.
But I'm part of the group again. Okay, thanks.
There you are.
Alright.
One way to get rid of him.
Hey, Tom.
Can everyone see that?
Yes, well, it looks like it's coming up. Okay.
It's coming up.
And we're on the presentation for the architectural design guidelines.
Alright, can everyone see that?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
It's having some issues loading. Um, city has some issues with it loading, uh, right now. It's only loading the first two slides.
We actually can't see anything right now. You have, it's on the Zoom. It's on a Zoom. Yeah, okay. Are you able to email it?
I can forward it to you.
Okay.
Actually, I might be okay. Um, so last we went over the East Point Downtown Overlay District rewrite that was conducted by ARC for our work session. So tonight, I'm going to run through it again and hopefully try to capture any comments if you all may, uh, have them. The ARC Community Development Assistance Program, also known as CDAP, the Atlanta Regional Commission provides planning technical, technical support to communities throughout the agencies on CDAP program. In 2018, the city applied for a comprehensive rewrite of the regulations that were specified in the downtown overlay district, as well as recommendations for amendments to be made for the commercial redevelopment known as the CR zoning district. The scope of the project was a rewrite of downtown architectural overlay, recommendations for amendments for the CR district that will be consistent with the LCI Main Street Corridor Transit Oriented Development Plan and complements the new streetscape and government center. The purpose was to focus land use and transportation study to support the TOD, um, around the MARTA stations. There were recommendations for focus areas as well as proposed land use plans and policies, building concept plans, as well as overlay and CR district amendments. This process started off with a kickoff meeting with staff. They were met with planning commission members as well as hosted public meetings. The ARC staff and consultants produced a draft and worked with staff with the city on edits and revisions. Uh, for those who can see, this is a picture of the public meeting that took place around September of last year. Uh, it was very well attended. Um, we received a lot of feedback, as you can see, as the picture is to the left. Received a lot of sticky notes from the community regarding recommendations and any amendments they wished to see. These were the forms used to draft those part, as part of the public meetings, uh, for people to give their feedback. Uh, if related, talked about public, um, building types, different types of establishments they wish to see and different type of focus areas. From the public comments, there was a conversation regarding the downtown core. For mixed use, it would be six to 10 stories, single-use, multi-story, and townhomes would be appropriate, as well as storefront buildings, uh, to be okay within the downtown core. Within downtown gateway and downtown transition, and for those who can see this, who have not called in, but are actually logged in, the colors on the words match the colors to the map on the left. So the downtown gateway and downtown transition, where you're basically coming in and exiting from the city limits. The town, there are townhomes and single uses found more, to be more appropriate. And the mixed use should not be taller than downtown core. The summary for the, um, meeting was for tiers for downtown core, downtown transition, downtown gateway, and the neighborhood live-work area. The building types found to be appropriate would be mixed-use, storefront, single-use, townhouse, and detached house, single-family. The chart that's on the screen is broken down by tiers and building types. Within tier one, it was found that mixed-use storefront and townhouse would be appropriate. Within tier two and tier three, also the same, mixed-use storefront and townhouse. And only within tier four, would you find the single-family detached house. The overlay summary also included what's known as form-based standards. It talks about the amount of transparency, which will be the glass or glazing on each building, pedestrian access, vehicle access, the lot dimensions, lot area, lot coverage, any setbacks, streetscape requirements, as well as building and story heights for each building type. Additional changes, the overlay is rearranged for easier reading. Drive-throughs wouldn't be permitted in downtown transition only. We utilize in regulations that were already in our codes, such as sidewalk standards, street lights, and street trees, architectural standards, and drive-through standards within the CR district. And that, if that presentation was sent to you all, um, if you have any comments now, or if you want to, um, draft the comments as a board and submit them to our department so that we can, uh, present it at the council, I'd appreciate that.
Perhaps because I'm new here, I didn't receive that. It should have been on the email list and I can send it to you. Thanks.
Tony, can you go back to the map again? I want to see the different areas again, please.
Yes, sir.
Can you hover over each of the areas, the core, the, um?
So this is the downtown transition areas. As you say, it's on the outermost, um, part of the city. And that is the transition as you're coming in from one area within, into the city limits. The downtown gateway is this purple color. This darker purple color. Downtown core, which is basically the heart of your downtown area, is this pinkish color. And then your neighborhood live-work are these orange colors.
Okay.
Alright, I'm trying to see if I can pull up the tiers. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If we go back to our agenda, um.
Hold on, hold on for a minute, Sean. Hold for a minute. I want Tony to go back to the map. I have myself muted. Tony, go back to the map and give me some streets going through there. When you say gateway, gateway from Vesta Inn, from College Park, or coming in right there where we had the triangle going from, uh, Conley Drive. With, show, show us that.
You're muted, Tony.
I'm not sure what the street names are. Unfortunately, I can't really see it that well myself, but I do know that this is Main Street.
Okay, let me just, let me just back up. If that look like that would be the triangle, look like that would be probably Conley there. At the top end of the, my arrow.
This is Norman Berry at the top area.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
This is Cleveland Avenue.
Okay.
Turns Irene Kid. Um, and then Washington Road.
Okay. So, I'm trying to see if that's, if that Norman Berry, where's the gateway coming into downtown? Like I said, with downtown corridor, that's Norman Berry way over there on the other side, but, by, uh, the hospital. Is that, you considering that as downtown?
That was what is identified. All of this is downtown. So downtown core, downtown transition, and downtown gateway.
And then it comes back on the lower.
So that's not saying, so this is your downtown core. This is your heart of downtown.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
I think the purple is downtown gateway that you're looking at, Commissioner.
Right.
Say it again, Lynn.
I think the purple that you're looking at, right at the end of Norman Berry there, is the downtown gateway.
Okay.
Not the downtown core. The downtown core is the pink in the, in the center. The darker purple is the gateway.
Okay, no, and when I look at the gateway coming in East Point, I look at it, it's starting at kind of where the V E is coming into downtown, being near where Manaloo Church is, and most people familiar with that, that, that leads into downtown. But I, I see the other side. That's why I was asking when you went way back over to Norman Berry, but Norman Berry does kind of cut up under, uh, Main Street there.
Basically, you've got two kind of gateway areas, a north gateway and a south gateway.
I can't hardly hear you, Lynn.
I am so sorry. Um, you've basically got two gateways, the north gateway and a south gateway. The triangle that you're talking about is one area of gateway, and then the Norman Berry is another area of gateway, just.
So we don't go, we don't go all the way to the College Park, where the College Park gateway coming in, uh, down, um, where's that, Vesta?
I'm at the same disadvantage you are. I have no idea because I can't read the street names.
Okay, okay, okay. Greg, I think that is Vista, um, going towards College Park, but I'm a little confused about Norman Berry because I didn't know Norman Berry crossed Main Street. I'm trying to drive it in my mind, and I just can't see it, but, but I think I know, I can tell from the map.
It's known beer drive coming down there where the Dairy Queen is, you know, with the.
Right, right.
That is known, but it come up under the bridge. There's a bridge that goes, the bridge is Main Street.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
That's the area where the Dairy Queen is. That's that area. It's just on the, it's on top of.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, I was driving to my head. I couldn't figure it out.
Right, I was too, which really leads back to your point, Greg, because as it goes around by the Dairy Queen, it loops up right at Conley.
Right at Conley.
So it loops, yeah, still from Conley, it swerves around down to Norman Berry. Um, Norman Berry is on the lower part, but on the upper part is really Conley.
Yeah.
I have a question about the housing. How many units are we talking about total, uh, including townhomes and make, uh, single?
There's not, um, any mention of how many units per se, as much as the stories. And that could be a comment that we can present to Sydney to clarify for council. Or to clarify for you all as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions, or concerns from the commissioners? Okay, here now, thank you, Tony, again. Um, staff, are there any other presentations?
No.
Okay, our next agenda item is old business, case number two zero one nine dash zero zero six dash zero eight. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Chairman, item number two. Case number twenty twenty V dash zero zero three dash zero three, applicant Stephen Rothman.
I'm sorry. Kim?
Yes.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm at old business. Item number one, two thousand nineteen, two zero one nine dash zero zero six dash zero eight.
I'm trying to get us out of here. I apologize for that. Um, yes, uh.
You're trying to get us in trouble.
No, sir, no, sir, chairman.
Doesn't like old business number one.
Old, old business.
Look, you just followed the agenda. I will get us out of here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Get us in trouble.
Okay, sir. Um, yes, item number one under old business, case number twenty nineteen dash zero zero six dash zero eight. Applicant, City of East Point. Uh, location description, the applicant seeks a text amendment to add definitions that pertain to short-term rentals to section ten dash two zero zero three, as well as add such uses as permitted uses to the applicable zoning district, um, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you've heard of this agenda item. Um, and as it has been mentioned before, this particular agenda item did have a public hearing back in September twenty nineteen. So we will not hold the public hearing for this agenda item this evening. So the applicant is the City of East Point. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, chairman. The staff's recommendation is to defer this case to the September third, twenty twenty special call meeting.
Okay. All right, commissioners, the staff's recommendation is to defer to September third, twenty twenty. Are there any, um, comments, questions? Well, is there a motion, an entertaining motion?
Motion to defer.
Okay, can you be specific times, uh, time certain, please, Mr. Miller?
Motion to defer the, the, uh, amendment in question to the September, uh, planning and zoning meeting.
September the third, twenty twenty?
Yes, September third, planning and zoning meeting.
Okay, now, we won't have a planning and zoning meeting on September third, Kim.
It is a special, special called meeting.
Call meeting.
Yes.
So it's a September third special call meeting, okay? Is there a second?
A second.
I can hear.
A second.
Okay, can you turn your microphone up, please, Commissioner Fields?
Maybe it's too far.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Miller to defer this agenda item to a special call meeting scheduled for September third, twenty twenty. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Fields. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This agenda item is deferred to our September third special call meeting, twenty twenty. September twenty twenty special call meeting. Our next agenda item under new business is case number twenty twenty viz invictus dash zero zero six dash zero three. This agenda item and others subsequent to it would require a public hearing. At this time, I'll read our rules for public hearings. Conducting public meetings remotely is a new process for most local governments due to the coronavirus outbreak and requirements on physical distancing. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recently started using Zoom, a video conferencing platform, to hold its meeting while making it available for the public to join remotely. Those attending these Zoom meetings are reminded that these are public meetings with established rules of procedure and decorum, which will still be followed to the extent reasonably possible. The meetings are held to address zoning business of the city of East Point, and to that end, anyone participating in the virtual meeting will be expected to follow the rules of public speaking at these meetings. Those in attendance have either accessed the meeting via telephone or webinar link. Unless you are an applicant or representative of applicant actively addressing the commission, I ask that you mute your microphone. Unless you signed up to make public comment on a particular agenda item prior to the calling of this meeting as set forth in the public notice, you will only be allowed to listen to the meeting. You will not be allowed to speak. The rules of, the rules of procedure requ- require a person who wishes to address the commission during the meeting to fill out a card providing his or her name, and his or her current address to identify the item he or she wishes to speak on as well. Since no persons will be physically present, applicants or the applicant's representative wishing to address the commission have already signed up and identified themselves. They will be called upon by the chair based upon the sign up, the chair or the chairs designate. Some members of the public may have email comments to the Planning and Zoning, um, Department. Each email address prior to the meeting, and those email comments will be noted and read for the record when a particular agenda item is called after the applicant's presentation to the commission has been completed. Additionally, some members of the public may have left a message with Planning and Zoning Department prior to the calling of this meeting, requesting an opportunity to comment on a particular agenda item over the phone during the meeting. Those individuals will be called by staff immediately prior to the calling of the agenda item in which they have expressed an interest and given the opportunity to listen to proceedings on the item and to address the commission at the appropriate time. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. However, understanding that this is a new platform and may take longer logistically, we will be relatively liberal with time until we get used to this platform. I think we're used to this platform. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total time of speakers provided that each side is given the same amount of time. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. After the allotted time expires, the microphone for the speaker, speaking will then be muted by the host. After speakers for and against an agenda item have had an opportunity to, uh, under these rules to address the commission, the public hearing will be closed, and the commission shall discuss the case amongst its members. Members of the public are not permitted to speak during the commissioner's deliberation. When not speaking, please mute your microphone to avoid background noise that can be disturbing to the meeting. If you fail to do so, the host will do so for you. Also, should any recognized speaker desire for the commission to view a document at any time, please request that the host find and share the document. Due to security concerns, no one other than the host will be permitted to share during the meeting. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum. Speakers shall speak only upon being recognized by the chair and only by the, to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration. Shall address remarks only to the commission and shall refrain from making personal attacks with any other speaker. This chair may refuse the speaker the right to continue if, after being first cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum, or the violator be removed from the zoning meeting upon the request of the chair. Please understand that staff will be multitasking a lot during the meeting and may not be able to respond to a chat inquiry immediately, if at all. However, should you experience technical difficulties during the meeting, please feel free to use the chat feature on the Zoom screen, and staff will attempt to assist you. We thank you for your patience and understanding as we work through these challenging times and this new technology. We'll get that updated. Um, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public here for case number twenty twenty viz invictus dash zero zero six dash zero three.
It's removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is removed by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public hearing for case number twenty twenty viz invictus dash zero zero six dash zero three. Uh, before we do so, staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Chairman, item number two, case number twenty twenty V dash zero zero six dash zero three. Applicant Stephen Rothman for a property located at twelve ninety-two, twelve ninety-four, twelve ninety-six, twelve ninety-eight, thirteen hundred, thirteen oh two, thirteen oh four, thirteen oh six, thirteen oh eight, thirteen ten, thirteen twelve, thirteen fourteen, thirteen, and thirteen sixteen. Sweetbrier Circle applicants seek stream buffer varies to apply to proposed single-family homes within the Sweetbrier subdivision within the fifty-foot and twenty-five-foot undisturbed natural vegetative buffer.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion to open the public here by Commissioner Tucker Todd, a second by Commissioner Lovett. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Rothman, would you please speak? State your first and last name and your current address.
Good evening. My name is Steve Rothman. My address is twenty-eight forty-nine Pace Berry Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero zero three nine. As you can see on the screen before you, this application involves, uh, thirteen parcels of land in the villages at East Point, um, subdivision. There's homes that have already been built in it. The road, the driveways, the utilities were all built, thousand and five. City Council approved the plat in two thousand and six. When they approved the plat, uh, they accepted the roadway, they accepted all the public infrastructure, and, uh, about four or five of the homes were built. Subsequent to that, there was the downturn in two thousand and eight, and construction stopped. And then, uh, the city increased stream buffer. It was originally approved, and there was disturbance up to the twenty-five-foot stream buffer, which existed, uh, in two thousand and six. Pavement right up to the stream buffer, but now it's up to, with the improvement setback, seventy-five feet. The impact of imposing the current stream buffer would be to completely eliminate the use of any of the remaining lots. And as you saw in the aerial photograph, which you have is a street with five homes, and it not only would render the lots useless, it also makes for a strange-looking sort of ghost town. So what we've asked for is a variance to allow us to go ahead and build this exactly the way it was built, intended to be built, and the vision that it was intended to be built, which is homes with rear, um, backyard garages, so that none of the homes look like welcome-to-my-garage kind of home from the street, but an alley or driveway in back. And then, uh, and, and then allow the homes to be built. I think with that, we reviewed the staff's analysis and recommendations, including their conditions. Those are acceptable to us. So I guess, out of respect for your time, I'll, I'll stop there and, um, reserve the rest of my time for response if we need it.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this agenda item? Any other proponents? Hearing none, are there any opponents here to speak against this agenda item? Any opponents here to speak against the agenda item? Hearing none, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is removed by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Lovett, that we close the public hearing for case number two zero two zero viz invictus dash zero zero six dash zero three. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, chairman, in reference to application twenty twenty V dash zero zero six dash zero six applicant Steve Rothman. Staff has recommended approval with two conditions, that the applicant and owner provide disclosure statement to buyers regarding limits of encroachment into the buffer. Condition number two, the applicant provides a survey of the properties to the buyers to show the encroachment of buffer, of the variance buffers, buffer variance encroachments.
Okay, commissioners, we've heard from the applicant. We've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Tucker Todd.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff, um, conditions as stated.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Is removed by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by Commissioner Fan for discussion. Commissioner Fan, do you have, um, comments, questions, or concerns?
I do. I have a couple of questions. We already building on that property? Staff, we already putting up a structure on that, on that property now?
Um, Commissioner Fan, um, this property was built in, um, well, the, the parcels and the, the land, land disturbance as far as utilities and streets were started in, I believe, the nineteen nineties. Uh, the properties along Stanton Road, some of those homes have already been built. And then after there was an economic downturn, the rest of the parcels that are located along the street by a circle.
I mean, Kim, Kim.
Yes.
I want you to go through that with me. I was there. I know the history of that, so I already understand that.
Yes, sir.
But I'm asking you, is there a building being constructed, construction on a property now? That's the question I'm asking.
No, sir. The, um, property owners do not have, um, uh, the proper building permits to start construction at this time.
I wrote about it the other day, is building going up on that property. So I'm just, I'm asking a question because, you know, I got history. Ben Bass was the one that started this project. Uh, and I was a part of approving it, and I'm, I don't have a problem with approving it now. But I'm just asking a question in terms of, is there, I, I saw construction going on over there, and I'm just asking that, you know, we're coming with this, was there already some building being built over there? That's the question I'm asking.
So, uh, Commissioner Fan, if, if I can jump in, um, on lot one and lot two, there were building permits issued. Um, these two lots were located outside of the stream buffer. So on those two lots, we were able to issue building permits. But on all the other lots in question, those are located inside the stream buffer. Um, so those lots have not been built yet.
Okay, I don't have a problem with approval condition. I was just wondering about the building that would be put up now, you know, before this was approved. That's all, that's all my only concern.
Excuse me. Thank you for the clarification, Albert.
I have a question. Um, I, I, I don't have a problem with the project. But can you put your mouse on the lots? Because I'm looking at the irregularity of the lot dimensions, and so I want to make sure I can see the beginning and the end lots, and the size of them. I can't clearly distinguish.
Can you see the lots that are highlighted in?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So thirteen here. Well, you can't see my mouse, but there are thirteen lots on this backside next to the stream.
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or the stream buffer, or that involved the stream buffer, because it's, some of them are not touching the stream, but they're within the stream buffer.
So if I count the yellow, um, boxes here, rectangles, I count ten. Where, where are the other three? I'm on the backside. I think I'm on the backside.
I'm on the backside. I think I'm on the backside.
So you have one here, two, three.
You have to use, you have to use the mouse?
You have to use them, yeah. I see it. Go ahead. 10, 11.
And, and I'd like to clarify on the, call it the, the north, the, the top side that faces Stanton Road, that one big lot is, if you go to the other plat, you'll see that that's divided. It, it's actually two lots there on, on the plat. So those yellow lines.
Okay, okay, okay. I got it now.
So there's not 13 pieces of property in the stream buffer then?
Yeah, the stream buffer does go all the way very close to Stanton Road.
Okay, so the lots to the, the north, I'm saying to the north, or there are two that you just talked about in the stream buffer?
Yes.
Yeah, because there is a stream, there is a drainage dish that's run down through there on that side. It is between that, there's apartments right there. It's like a drainage dish or something between those apartments and this property. Yeah, so that would be considered a stream buffer?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I have a question. Those lines that's indicated on the, on the drawing, on the, on the first drawing, does that indicate the extent of the, the lots? So we, can you put up that other picture, please? First one, yeah. Do these lines here, does this indicate the extent of the property line going back this way toward, toward the creek? Right here?
Mr., Mr. Fields, the best delineation of the property lines would be on the site plan that was on side of the previous slide. That would be the best way to.
The reason I, the reason I ask you, because I went over there yesterday myself as well, just to take a look at the area to see exactly what we'd be discussing this night, this evening. And if you look at the, that road back there, that's an eight-foot road, and right behind that is the bank of the creek.
And, and if I, or we will not be going beyond the driveway, that road. We're, we're just asking to stay, to, to, to build homes on what was already disturbed. They're not looking to take down anything extra or get closer to the stream than what you saw yesterday.
Well, what I, the only reason I was asking, because if there's a 50-foot setback, so that's what I wanted to clarify. Where is the 50-foot buffer zone located?
I would answer it this way, the, the driveway that you saw.
Put that first picture back up, please. Okay, now we can talk. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, the existing driveway is the, basically. Yes, that's the, that's 25 feet from the stream, roughly. I mean, that's basically 25 feet.
From here over to here, because the, the stream is right here.
Yes.
And the water's running.
Yep, 25 feet from the bank of the stream. And so we cannot get closer than that. We, when we built it, that was the rule. Now the rule is that it's 75 feet total, and we're asking to just keep it like it is. Allow us to build houses on one side of the driveway and to have garages in back, just like intended originally.
So that people can, when they come in, they can come down this road, go up here and go into their driveway?
Yeah, exactly.
Which means that this, from this driveway forward is the area you're speaking of and not back here. Because if you're back here, you're over the creek.
That's correct.
So which is this, sir?
It's closer, it's between the driveway and the street. That's where the homes will go and the garages will go. There's no additional encroachment towards the west, towards the stream.
So you're going to say this side of this little road right here that goes around the circle?
I can't see where you're, you're.
See this?
They can't see your mouse because you're not seeing the screen.
I'm not.
So you need to tell me what you're looking for.
Are you able to, to do a circle? It's on the area between the street and Sweetbrier? If you could kind of draw.
That area, they're going to do that, but we're talking about the setback area, I believe, near the creek. That's the one I'm speaking of. There's a roadway that goes around. It's like an access road that goes around there, and it's.
Are you talking about this one?
Yes, that one. And, and right, right to the right of that. So that, that's the question I was asking, will the homes stay on this side of that, that roadway there?
Will the homes sit closer to the rear of that or in front of it? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, if you run that down here, again, come over, yeah. Now from there, over toward those homes that you see that's already been indicated here, that's about 80 feet from here to here. So my question is, are they going to stop right there at the street? On this side of that driveway with their homes? Otherwise, you're going to be in the, you're going to be in the creek.
The answer to your question is yes.
Yes. Mr. Rothman was saying that the building would occur on the east side of that road that Tony has now circled. So the east side of that road would then be the land between Sweetbrier and that road that Tony circled.
Okay, that's clarifying. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns from commissioners? We currently have a motion to approve made by Commissioner Tucker Todd with staff's conditions as sounded, and that motion was seconded by Commissioner Lovett. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Here none, the ayes have it. This agenda item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman. Our next agenda item is 2020 Z as in zebra dash zero zero four dash zero three, with a concurrent variance of 2020 V as in Victor C as in Charles as zero one zero dash zero three. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Chairman, and item number three, case number 2020Z dash zero zero four dash zero three. Concurrent variance 2020 dash VC dash zero one zero dash zero three. Applicant is Ruben Jones. The property is located at 1662 Ware Avenue. The applicant is requesting to rezone property from R1A to R2 to allow for duplex residential use and a three-part concurrent variance for relief from side yard, front side yard, and the rear side yard, the rear setback, excuse me.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's removed by Commissioner Fan, second by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public hearing for this agenda item. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Here none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Jones, are you present?
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, would you go ahead and present your case? State your first and last name and your current address.
Good evening. My name is Ruben Jones of 1382 Custer Way, Atlanta, Georgia, 30316. As shown in the slide, we are wishing to rezone the property from R1A, single-family, to R2 to allow for a duplex. What we would like to do is use the vacant property, which has been vacant for about the last 15 years, per the neighbors, and use the existing footprint and layout and only rehab the interior to create two separate units, to create a duplex property. Each unit will be two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, and roughly 2,300 square feet with a storage space in between the two units.
Okay. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? Here none. Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Here none. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 2020 Z as in zebra dash zero zero four dash zero three and 2020 VC Victor Charles dash zero one zero dash zero three. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Here none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Chairman, item number three, case number 2020Z dash zero zero four dash zero three. Concurrent variance 2020 VC dash zero one zero dash zero three. Applicant Ruben Jones, property located at 1662 Ware Avenue. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from R1A to R2 to allow for duplex residential use and a three-part concurrent variance for relief from side yard setback, front yard setback, and rear start, rear yard setback. Staff has recommended approval of this item with two conditions. Condition number one, approval is condition on-site plan provided at the survey, Land Express, Inc., dated March 25, 2020. Condition number two, if structures demolished, property will need to adhere to all R2 development standards out set forth in the city ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, Mr. Ruben Jones. We've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I entertain a motion. Please be mindful that this is a zoning matter with a concurrent variance. Your motion should be made in the, in the form of a recommendation. Let's not all speak at once.
What's the question? I'm sorry.
Mrs. Chair, I'll make the motion.
I'd like to make the.
Go on, go on.
Ms. McKnight?
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve case number, oh, 2020 two zero 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 four. Is that right?
Can you bring it back up?
Can you hear me? Yes, bring the screen, please. Thank you.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve case number, oh goodness, I can't see that number, 2020Z zero zero four dash zero three and 2020, I think it says Z.
V as in Victor?
It's really tiny on my screen. I don't know why. Okay. Zero, that's better. Zero one zero dash zero three.
Okay, and that second case number is 2020 Victor Charles VC dash zero one zero three? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner McKnight.
Thank you, with staff recommendations and conditions. I mean, I'm sorry, with staff conditions.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I second it, Sean. I second it, 2020Z.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor.
I have my glasses on, too. I'm like, ah.
There's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McKnight. This body recommends approval of case number 2020Z as in zebra dash zero zero four dash zero three with a concurrent variance of 2020 VC Victor Charles dash zero one zero dash zero three and with staff's conditions as stated. That motion was approved by Commissioner Fan. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Lovett?
On the front yard, I know there's, there's pavement there. Is that pavement level with the street? And can people just park on the street, the tenants? I mean, can they just park on the pavement? Or, because I heard the applicant say they plan to put plants there in pots. So the question is, is, is the, is there going to be a parking garage attached to the building? Are they parking? Where are they parking? Because I know people park on, I know they will park wherever there's pavement.
There's a lot in the back of it, I think.
There's actually parking along the side of the building. If you could go to the light, I think it shows it.
Okay. So there should not be any parking in the front. Is that right?
That's correct. There should not be parking in the front. All the parking will be happening on the side of the building. I think that's the.
What's to keep anyone from parking on the front?
Fencing, landscaping.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing. I mean, it's a public.
Big old giant tree.
It's a public tree.
So, but Commissioner Lovett, are you talking about on-street parking?
No, they have, they have pavement in front of the, no, not on-street, but I'm talking about right in front of the house.
I think, talking about Commissioner Lovett, that section, there may be pavement there. If there is, it's mostly broken up. And as Commissioner Miller mentioned, there's a very large tree that doesn't actually allow access to that part of the property.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, because I can see the tree, and I, but I see the pavement, but I can't see what's in front of the actual pavement, if there's access. So you're saying there is no access to that pavement?
You, you can't really access, you'd have to have a very small car.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
I do have a question as well of staff. So just to be sure that I understand. So the R1A to R2, in this instance, does this go singularly to Mr. Jones? Or if we, if we now vote to, to change the zoning to R2, does it run with the property from this point forward?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And Mr. Jones, of all the things that we've seen over all the years, I must tell you that yours is, or in my opinion, the best plans for the, for the, for the property.
Let's go with opinion, Commissioner Tucker.
Kim, Kim, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, Tony, can you go to the site plan that was presented? And is that the site plan that was referenced in the conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Mr. Jones, did you also, from the work session, we had talked about the amount of, I guess, asphalt there on the property? can you talk a little bit about what, how you, you and you plan to address all, all of the, the asphalt and the impervent surfaces on the property?
I was speaking with my architect a couple of days after the work session. Oh, thank you very much, Tony.
That wasn't me. That was Kimberly, but you're still welcome.
Me and the architect worked this up. As I mentioned in the last session, we were going to lose some of that parking just based on access into the building from the units. From above in that top image, you can see what looks like some coverings coming out of the existing roof. Those would be the entryways into the property. And in order to keep those clear and free, we're going to put some planters in those parking spaces. So you can see, kind of in the center of the building, two green, two green areas, and then all the way to the, I guess, south of the building or the right of the top, left of the top image, I'm sorry. You see another green space. That is us blocking out some of that parking to help reduce some of that stormwater runoff that you mentioned, green up the space a bit. To be honest, I don't like all the asphalt either. But obviously, I don't want to take all the parking, two unit, two bedrooms per unit, plus what I feel is, is reasonable as a guest parking space, so they're not parking off-street if they have guests come over. So six total spots remaining.
Okay, so there's nothing that conditions the applicant to this rendering? And so I would like for the commission to consider, you know, adding a condition so that it reflects just as Mr. Jones has paid good money to have his architect to do. We would not want him to waste that.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah, who is that?
Joseph Fields.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Fields.
I visited that site yesterday as well, and I took, you know, had a look at it and thought of condition that it was in, as well as, I remember your remarks at the, the working section, the working session regarding, you know, doing something about the beautification of the area. And based on what he's, what I see right now, he's made a great effort to actually green up that space, make it look very residential, as a matter of fact. So I would, I would, I would say, based on the rendering of the new presented plans by his architect, that that would be conditioned on, on this particular matter. So I, I think it would be a great idea to approve it.
Is there a friendly amendment that you'd like to make to Commissioner McKnight? That she also includes this condition that the site plan is developed as presented in, we don't have a marking on this, so I don't know how to identify it?
It was submitted to staff on today's date.
Okay.
Might I suggest, might I suggest, rather than depending upon the vagaries of retaining this document and being able to identify it as submitted on a particular day, that you just add as a friendly amendment the conditions that are listed on the slide, such that, you know, you would have condition number three, add cover over entries to break up length of property. Condition number four, add plantings over some existing parking. You see where I'm going with that?
Yeah.
So as opposed to referring to a slide that could go walkabout in the course of several years. I think it would be better to articulate those conditions specifically.
Good call.
Hey, you get, I was going, I was going to bring that up to ask you that question, London. Hey, you get, I was going, I was going to bring that up to ask you that question, Linda, but you just, you preempted me, but we're good.
And I, great minds think alike, right?
Okay, so. Would a commissioner like to make that friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, okay, Mr. Fields, your friendly amendment is to increase the conditions to include those items that are bulleted on slide number three in this presentation. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's presented revised from our working section. Session.
And that's five bullets.
Can we state them for the, can you, can we state them?
It's it's four.
You really only need four bullets?
Four bullets, yeah. The first one is the rezone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Beautiful pictures are covering it up, but I'm good.
Okay, and Miss Commissioner McKnight, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I do.
And Commissioner Fan, does your second still stand?
It still stands.
Okay, any other comments, questions, or concerns? The motion on the floor made by Commissioner McKnight is to recommend approval with the conditions as stated by staff and the conditions that are just now added from slide three of this presentation. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Fan. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This body recommends approval. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is two zero two zero M is in Mary dash zero zero four dash zero seven. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Chairman, item number four, twenty twenty M dash zero zero four dash zero seven. Applicant, City of East Point. Property is citywide. This is a text amendment. The applicant, City of East Point, seeks a text amendment to amend. Chapter two, Article A, Section ten dash two zero zero three. Chapter two, Section ten dash zero zero seven two. The City of East Point ordinance to make provisions and add definitions for small box stores.
Okay, this agenda item does require public hearing, so commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to public, public.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public hearing for case number two zero two zero M is in Mary dash zero zero four dash zero seven. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. The applicant is the City of East Point. Staff, would you please present this case?
Uh, Chairman, this item was actually properly advertised for September third, twenty twenty twenty. And it is staff's recommendation that this item be deferred to the September third. Well, not defer, because it was properly advertised for September third, but to defer public comment for the September third, twenty twenty property.
Okay, so Linda, because it's on our agenda, is it proper, the the deferral is, would that be the proper route? For that?
I I need some clarification from Kimberly, because we actually did talk about this item before the meeting today. My understanding, Kimberly, was that this item was not properly advertised for this evening, however.
It was not properly advertised for this evening, but it was a discussion item for the work session.
Okay, so because it wasn't properly advertised for this evening, we we cannot really hear it. It was properly advertised for September third. So, quite honestly, it shouldn't really have been on the agenda, but I do think it would be appropriate to have a motion to defer it specifically to September third due to the advertising problem.
And and with that, Linda, because it wasn't properly advertised for tonight, we opened a public hearing, but we don't even need to take a motion to close the public hearing, because legally, we could not have had a public hearing.
Well, I don't even think you need to make a motion to open the public hearing. I think it's.
We already did, that's.
Oh, oh, you did. I'm sorry. I must have been, I must have been snoozing at that point, so. Go ahead and just make, it it's appropriate now to entertain a motion from the board to defer it and not take any public comment on it.
Right. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to defer two zero two zero M is in Mary dash zero zero four dash zero seven to the special call meeting for September third, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
The move by Commissioner Tucker Todd, that we defer this item to the September third, twenty twenty special call meeting, has been seconded by Commissioner Lovett. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. This agenda item is deferred. Our next agenda item is two zero two zero M is in Mary dash zero zero three dash zero seven. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Chairman, item number five. Case number twenty twenty M dash zero zero three dash zero seven. Applicant is City of East Point. The property, the text amendment is for citywide. This applicant, City of East Point, seeks a text amendment to amend. Chapter two, Article A, Section ten dash zero zero three, and Chapter two, Article C, Sections ten dash twenty seventy nine, Section ten dash twenty six eighty. In order to establish new zoning districts, warehouse, industrial district, as well as a new mixed-use commercial industrial district, which will allow for transitional uses.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public here for two zero two zero M is in Mary dash zero zero three dash zero seven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, that we open the public here, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Staff, would you please sound, staff, would you please present this case?
Yes, Chairman, this particular case came about actually organically from the Peachy Parking downzoning that this board had application on several weeks, several months ago. And unexpectedly, and unbeknownst to us, there was a moratorium put in place in the midst of that application going forward. During the staff analysis of the Peachy Parking and in the midst of the moratorium. Staff has had the opportunity to review the zone, the I one district permitted uses and intended uses via the comprehensive plan, as well as the permitted uses in the zoning ordinance for I one and I two. And during that analysis and during those studies, it was found that the staff wanted to come up with a response to the moratorium. With that being said, staff has put together a staff analysis in reference to I one properties as well as I two properties, zone properties, and these two proposed zoning districts. Tony, are you able to put up the warehouse district staff analysis so we can go over the analysis?
Yes.
And I'd just like to say while we're waiting for that, the the purpose and intent of the warehouse district is to seek a a better way for the really the City of East Point to to permit warehouses. With the history of the City of East Point being built on as an industrial city from its beginning, back to the eighteen hundreds, there were many, many industrial sites. Many of them, as we know now, may have been and are potentially hazardous. We have seen data that would support that the City of East Point is really in an environmental justice situation as far as the health, safety, and welfare, and having a disproportionate share of health and safety impacts from these type of heavy industrial uses within the City of East Point. And for that, we have created the warehouse zoning classification to mitigate and help separate any type of new warehouse zoning classifications coming within the city. Uh, Tony, are you able to scroll down for us? And the.
Which part do you want to go to?
This is, this is, this is great. The basic intent is really to pull out the warehouse and manufacturing type of uses and to allow for those uses to be used within the City of East Point in places where they would be compatible. We have created, and with this creation of this new zoning district classification, a rezoning application would be necessary for these uses to move forward. And the intent for that is to have this board, as well as Mayor Council, to have a special look at any warehousing, manufacturing type of land uses coming into the city due to the already saturated situation that the city is in and due to the environmental justice issues that we were able to uncover during our analysis and and study of current industrial uses within the City of East Point. We have worked with the company that came to talk to you all on the last work session. And we have been able to work with them and obtain recommendations on how we can move forward with the best practices for mitigation, mitigating residential uses being adjacent to the heavy industrial uses. As you could see in our analysis, Ward A has approximately nineteen point ninety-two existing acres that are zoned I one and I two. And there are approximately nine sites in Ward A. As you can see from the analysis in Ward B, there are approximately nine hundred point one acres of industrial zone property. And there are approximately three hundred and forty-six industrial sites within the City of East Point. And you can see broken down on the chart that the percentages of which ones are zoned I one and I two. And in Ward C, there are no industrial properties, which was unbeknownst to us. But there are no industrial properties located in Ward C, according to our studies. And then finally, Ward D, there are approximately six hundred and forty-six point five acres of industrial zone property in in that ward, and there are approximately twenty-seven existing sites. So we really wanted to take advantage of the opportunity that came about from the Peachy Parking rezoning and how we made a recommendation to this board to downzone that property to C two to mitigate the heavy industrial impacts of the past. And it it really used that as a mitigation tools, as a transitional tool. Really for City of East Point moving forward as a more regulated to to mitigate environmental justice in our, in the air, in the water for the citizens. And to address the disproportionate shares and concentration of these type of uses. When it's adjacent to schools, to water, to, to, excuse me, and to residential uses. And also. Well, I'll stand there and I'll hold for any questions.
Okay, well, we're in the public hearing, so you won't have questions at this time. We'll get other proponents. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents?
The Chair.
Yes.
There are three callers or listeners that are in, they didn't seem to really be speaking in terms of support or in opposition, but they did want to speak just in general to talk about. I know some of them were talking about the impact that living next to industrial has had, and some just want to talk about the impacts of the moratorium. I mean, they are on the line if you would like them to speak.
Yeah, Linda, would they need to speak under proponents or opponents? I don't think I have any category that says Switzerland.
Yeah, we don't, we don't really have a public comment, so I I guess what I would recommend is that those individuals who wish to speak sort of indicate somehow by by showing that their hand if they want to speak in favor or if, and then we can call for those who want to speak against, keeping in mind that there are time limits. So they may want to just sort of evenly divide themselves to take advantage of the for and against, but we have to, they have to identify if they're mostly for or against.
Right. Well, can we ask them while they're on the phone, on the call?
Tony, I.
Yes.
I received a request from a Carrie Ziegler. Is she present?
She is chatting right now, actually, so she should be on the call. Do you want me to call her? Is she on the call? Can you just, can she speak from Zoom?
Hi.
Yes, yes, she should be allowed to speak.
Um, so we were, uh, so this text amendment was not finished until two hours before this meeting was started. So there really isn't any way that we can say that we're for or against something that we haven't seen yet.
I would suggest that you say that you're against it, because you haven't had enough time to digest it. And then you will be given an opportunity to speak when he calls for those who are opposed to it.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time, are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any opponents?
I I guess I'm like, I'm against.
Okay, would you say your first and last name and your current address?
Uh, my name is Carrie Ziegler, and I live at nine four seven Parkside Terrace, East Point. Do I just keep going?
Yes, you do.
Okay, um, so I live really close to the Oakley Industrial Park. Um, I like to share the impact of living next to an industrial park, because per the industrial moratorium is to look at the health and safety measures that can be provided. Personally, I am worried about additional chemical releases from industrial plants. In two thousand and four, East Point made national news when Brentag, which is an industrial plant on Oakley, had a five thousand gallon tank outside that started leaking acetic acid. This caused every house within a mile radius to be evacuated, which included Jefferson Park and Colonial Hills. An area of continued contamination is the South River, which runs through River Park, and it is iridescent blue, foamy, and frothy. You cannot see the bottom of this river because of the of the amount of contaminants that are in it. This river runs through residents' backyard next to a playground and Parkland Elementary. Testing results reveal that the Owens Illinois Manufacturing Plant and the Newell Recycling Plant are responsible for this contamination. It has been like this for decades and has been impossible to get responsible companies to clean up this mess. Another industrial plant is the Meredith Company, which sits right at the end of Oakley Drive. It sits in between Jefferson Park and Colonial Hills. In two thousand and seven, we had a Jefferson Park neighbor who sued the Meredith Company for polluting our air with potentially cancerous chemicals. At that time, there was a study done with the Agency for Toxic Substance and Disease Registry, which showed that Jefferson Park residents show these chemicals in their urine after being in this area for only thirty minutes. Since this, since these industrial plants release toxins in the air, a lot of times, they will do most of their work at night. And this causes a lot of industrial noise at at night, and it's very disturbing to be woken up by sudden violent noises when you're trying to sleep. Living here also means with indoor chemical smells, often while working in our backyards and walking around in the neighborhood. We have collected data using the Smell My City app, where residents can report smells, as well as physical ailments that they experience. This data shows that not only do we have a problem with our, with overpowering odors, but residents are currently experiencing headaches, dizziness, and burning eyes. Although we have, although I have personally not experienced this, there are Jefferson Park residents who have noticed semi-trucks driving throughout the neighborhood, parking and parking in residential streets. Although this is illegal, how are we supposed to enforce it? If we allow warehouses to continue to be built here in East Point, these things will continue to be a problem, which are difficult to correct. There are other quality of life issues as well, like how our roads get torn up from semis driving on them. For example, the corner of Sylvan Road and one sixty-six is very bumpy, and it has been difficult for the city to maintain this area. Uh, while this is going on, I have hope. I see that we have interest in our city to revamp some of our industrial park areas. In in the Oakley Industrial Park, we have Cinema Greens, where they sell plants that are that were on movie sets and TV shows. We have Cinema East, which is a production studio. And other film industry companies have made East Point their home. This is the direction that we should be taking the city and not creating more zoning for industrial plants and warehouses to be built. Uh, we also have the ability to draw in other industries here as well, and we have potential to become the black. And we have potential to become the Black Silicon Valley. We don't need to be resigned of this life forever because East Point residents deserve better. We have the ability to change and it starts with our zoning laws and with this industrial moratorium. Also, right now, we have a national spotlight on systemic racism. Here in East Point, we see this happening because we have industrial plants and warehouses located in a city that's predominantly low income African American. A lot of these plants and warehouses are in violation of the Clean Water Act and Clean Air Act. And it seems like because of the area that we live in, it has been very hard to get these companies into compliance. Oh, what happened? Going forward, I like to see that the commission constantly asks yourselves, is this zoning perpetuating perpetuating systemic racism? How can I help ensure the East Point residents who may or may not have access to healthcare live in an area that is healthy? How can we all move East Point forward in an equitable, favorable and fair way? And I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler. Are there any other opponents here to speak against this zoning matter? Any other opponents?
Christina Hardo has raised her hand.
Okay. Ms. Hardo, please state your first and last name and your current address.
I am making moves to allow her to speak. Okay. Allow. Okay, she should be able to speak. Ms. Hardo should be able to speak.
Hello, I realized it says Christina Hardo. I didn't have an opportunity to be able to change it to Garrett Hardo. My name is Garrett Hardo. I live at one one four three Glendale Drive, East Point, Georgia, three zero three one. I was calling to oppose the industrial moratorium lifting simply because I moved here recently to Jefferson Park two years ago, and I do believe it is a great place to live. But after living here for a few years, I realized that there's a part of our community that we don't even walk in anymore because of the smell because of the plant that's nearby, P P G. And that there's other sites in the area with similar concerns. And it just seems like for us moving forward that industrial sites being put close to our neighborhoods, not just Jefferson Park, but any neighborhoods in East Point, is probably not in our better interests. That being said, I think there are industries that could be good for us. But how do we regulate that if we remove the moratorium? In addition, if we remove the industrial moratorium, it seems like when industrial sites get allowed to build, it becomes very hard for us to be able to regulate as a governance or as citizens to protect us against any environmental infractions or observations. And so it seems like there should be safeguards put in place before lifting it so that things can actually be done in regards to either the EPA or local organizations that have documented problems in the areas. So that being said, I think just as our communities would like to demand is that we all would want the best for our environment and for our communities. And until we can have best practices in place, it seems ill advised to lift the moratorium. I concede my time.
Thank you, Mr. Hardo. Are there any other opponents here to speak against this zoning matter? Any other opponents here to speak against the zoning matter?
Erin, there is a Julie Erin that would like to speak against.
Okay, please unmute her mic. Ms. Erin? Ms. Erin?
Okay, I am allowing Ms. Erin to speak.
Okay, Ms. Erin?
Ms. Erin should be able to speak.
She's muted. Ms. Erin, please, can you unmute your microphone?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I'm speaking in opposition to the
Ms. Erin, before you start, please state your first and last name and your current address.
My name is Julie Earring and I live in Jefferson Park. My address is twenty-five forty-eight Jefferson Terrace. I received notice today at two P M. About this public hearing on the industrial moratorium and the text amendment, the proposed text amendment. I requested a copy of the text amendment and I hadn't received it before. Requested the copy again and I still didn't have an opportunity to see it before this evening's meeting. But what I can share with you as a four-year resident is that a group of us as neighbors have kept logs of the odors of paint thinner from P P G Industries. And we submitted an analysis of our odors to the U S EPA. And on the basis of that, they made an unannounced inspection of P P G and found that they were in significant violation and noncompliance with hazardous material regulations. They brought a civil case enforcement action against that company. This is in the two thousand, this work happened over two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen against P P G, which included both fines and monitoring. That facility is directly across the street from the Jefferson Park neighborhood. We have also spent time collecting canisters of air samples. And we have basic information, some information about what we found in those air samples. And we hope to have more by the end of the month. What we've also found is that when we reported these concerns to the city of East Point, the director of Water and Sewer shared with me that she would make an investigation. However, when her department sent out a senior investigator to the company, the company would not let them in because of COVID nineteen was the reason given. But interestingly, research shows that COVID nineteen is made significantly worse by air pollution. So those of us in East Point who are breathing air pollution have worse outcomes from COVID nineteen. That's particularly a problem because we have so many black and people of color residents who live in this area and they are at greatest risk from having comorbidities such as asthma and high blood pressure and things of that sort, which cause them to have a greater chance of a poor outcome and even death. So the industries along Oakley and Lawrence are of great concern to many residents. And there's not a lot of transparency about how to participate in these Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. You have to jump through a whole lot of hoops to do so. It's not an easy process to be able to get to make public comments and to get a copy of the materials that you need to be able to read in order to provide an informed opinion on a text amendment that will significantly affect your day-to-day life in terms of the companies that are allowed to operate there. So my suggestion and my concern is if this group worked to implement the parts of the comprehensive plan that have to do with creative industries, whether it's the film industry or whether it's, as the Guardian newspaper said, Atlanta is the Black Silicon Valley. If it's tech industries, work to bring in those types of industries. We don't need more trucks creating particulate matter two point five, which leads to bad COVID outcomes, noise at night and and other hazardous problems. Those are my concerns. And I'm happy to share documentation with you. Perhaps Ms. Smith can share some of what I have forwarded to Planning and Zoning, including a list of companies that were in noncompliance with U S EPA laws as of July twenty-ninth this year. It'd be great to see that that list. I have sent along a J P E G that could be shared. Some of those companies are in significant compliance year after year after year. Is it possible to share that?
Oh, you can submit it to staff during this. Okay, yeah, and staff can, staff can share that with the commission. But during this time, we won't respond because it's the public's opportunity to provide their comments. So I don't want you to think that we're ignoring you.
Okay, I was just hoping it could be put up on the screen right now so that we would all have a chance as a group to look at it. Because it's, it's pretty incredible to look at the number of companies that are operating in noncompliance with environmental regulations. That should be the floor, not the ceiling. And there are companies that have been failing to comply year after year after year. Southernwood Piedmont is one example, has not had an E P D approved corrective action plan in place since the mid eighties. Yet.
Chairman, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, continue, Ms. Erin.
Those are my concerns. I don't think, the whole point of the moratorium was to take a look at the health, safety and welfare of residents. And what I'm hearing so far tonight is I'm not, I'm not hearing about that. As I shared, I haven't had an opportunity to read this text amendment. I have requested it. It hasn't been provided to me before the meetings. I haven't had the opportunity to read it or I would have. So not having had that opportunity, what I can share with you are some information from the many documents and many pages of information that we have requested from some of these companies and that we have read through and the information that we've learned about the manufacturing facilities currently operating in that area.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Erin. Any other opponents here to speak against this zoning matter? Any other opponents here to speak against this zoning matter? Hearing none, seeing none.
Tony, Tony, did you have any other callers that called before to, that have not spoken yet?
No, it was just those three, Mr. Garrett, Ms. Julie and, do we talk Ms. Carrie? Ms. Carrie spoke already, right?
Yes, yes, you did.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, all right. Hearing and seeing no other opponents, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing for case number two zero two zero M is in Mary does zero zero three dash zero seven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by Commissioner Love it. Then we close the public hearing for two zero two zero M is in Mary does zero zero three dash zero seven. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have the public hearing is now closed. Before we move forward, I did receive a message from Commissioner Bell that he would have to leave the meeting. And so for Janine, if she would please note that in the record that Commissioner Bell is leaving the meeting. Jared, you're still here, you're just on mute. So the record would need to reflect that you're leaving the meeting if you need to leave the meeting. Okay, maybe it's already gone and just still logged on. Okay, commissioners, at this time, I, we've heard from the applicant, which is the city of East Point. We've also heard from opponents to this zoning matter. I'll entertain a motion. And please be sure to make your motion in the form of a recommendation.
I'd like to recommend that we defer this to our next regularly scheduled work session in September.
Sir, sir, a staff wasn't given the opportunity to make a recommendation.
So very sorry, so very sorry. I'm ahead of myself. We've heard from the applicant. That's why I thought that we've also heard from the opponent. So at this time, staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, yes, Chairman. Item number five, twenty twenty M dash zero zero three dash zero seven. The applicant, City East Point, the property will, the text amendment is proposed for citywide. The applicant, City of East Point, seeks a text amendment to amend chapter two, article A, section ten dash twenty zero three dash, oh, excuse me, and chapter two, article C, section ten dash twenty seventy-nine, section ten dash twenty eighty. In order to establish new zoning districts, warehouse, industrial, as well as a mixed-use commercial industrial district, which will allow for transitional uses, staff does recommend that this item be deferred to the September third special call meeting twenty twenty with the allowance of a public hearing. Staff will like to acknowledge that this text amendment information was circulated to this board today and therefore has not had the opportunity to review it. Staff will also like to to recognize that the public has not had the opportunity. And for that reason, we would like to recommend deferral where we will have the opportunity to place attachments on our website. We will also have the opportunity to provide all the backup information as well on our website and attachments. And that has not been done. And for that reason, we're recommending a deferral to September third special call meeting twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you. Linda, I, I have a question. But I've not yet. Okay, let's go ahead and and do a motion. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we defer.
Is there a second?
Our second for discussion, just for a brief discussion, Ms. Chair.
Okay, there's been a motion by Commissioner Fields that we defer to our regularly, to our, to the special call meeting for September third twenty twenty. Is that correct, Mr. Fields?
That's correct.
Okay, and that second is made by Commissioner Fans. That still stand Commissioner Fan?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I just have a brief discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a brief discussion. You know, I've heard what the citizens have said and I know the history. And I mean, and and this is really serious because the Creosote plant was one of the plants that we had a major problem with some years ago. So their concerns are legitimate concerns. And we really need to look at how we can best do this to accommodate the issues already that are there and as opposed to bringing on other, other problems. So I'm looking forward to the, the meeting with the work session and what staff is looking to do to make sure that we can ensure that we are sound in what we're about to do in the future and moving East Point forward. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thank you. Kim, Kimberly, I understand that we are also anticipating that we will have another public hearing at that special call meeting. Is that correct?
That is the recommendation from staff is to allow for another public meeting to be held at the September third twenty twenty.
Okay, and has that already been advertised?
The September third meeting has already been advertised, but because this particular text amendment was advertised for this meeting, a deferral would not require an additional advertisement to the September third. If you all move it to that meeting, then that is all of the legal advertising that is required is for it to be deferred in this meeting.
And Sean, if it is, if it is the commission's desire to have additional comments from the public on September third, then you can open it up at that time for, you know, public comment. But it has been advertised for public hearing, as I understand it from Kimberly for this evening. Is that correct, Kimberly?
That is correct.
Okay. And and to Commissioner Fan's comment, you know, I don't believe there will be a work session of the Planning and Zoning Commission before September third, unless, of course, the Planning and Zoning Commission wants to have a specially called work session prior to September third to discuss this at more length with staff.
To that, I think we need to, I think we need to have one, I must say. I think we need to have a work session where we can sit down with staff and have some serious conversation about this. Because most people who are on this commission who live in Jefferson Park and who have lived here for a long time know those issues that they are talking about. These are not something that's abstract to us. We know that these environmental issues have been around. A young lady talked about River Park for the longest. We know that's been a problem for the longest. I mean, so we need to really drill down and have some serious conversation around this. I think we need to really have a work session prior to the actual meeting on the third, on this matter. That's my suggestion.
Well, I think that that is a good suggestion. It's a great suggestion that it would be great to really unpack these things in a work session. Because what will happen is the September third will become a work session meeting. And it will be a very, very long meeting because of that. I don't know what the schedule I don't know what the schedule would be like, but I think that we would need to, Linda. Do we have to advertise work sessions? Because work sessions, you're on mute. Because work sessions-
I'm sorry. You can have a specially-called work session. It does not have to be advertised pursuant to the zoning procedures law. You know, you can have a specially-called meeting with a 24-hour call, quite honestly. On the other hand, you know, we have to sort of figure out between now and September 3rd, when would be a good time for all of the members to, to meet for such a work session? That may pose some logistical issues. Understand, staff is recommending that this matter be deferred to the September 3rd specially-called meeting because there's a specially-called meeting for other items.
Right.
But you don't have to do that.
That doesn't mean that we have to have this. It just feels like it's too soon to me. I appreciate what the speakers were saying, too. It feels like we're rushing this. I would like to have this in our regular work session for September and for, for the regular hearing for the September, September calendar as opposed to pushing it to the special call meeting. First one.
Can I add for, can I add something, please? The intent of the, the special or proposing or recommending it to the special call meeting is to stay in line with the moratorium as it will expire at the end of September. It's going to expire on September 3rd. So that was the urgency that staff was wanting to make sure that we-
30th or 30th?
It's going to expire on September 30th.
30th, okay. Well, that would still be within our regularly scheduled. I mean, you know, my point is, I appreciate, of course, I've lived in Jefferson Park since 2004 and appreciate the speakers. But I also believe that, Kimberly, that you were trying, that this is in line with what you were trying to do with this text amendment as well. It sounds like we're all kind of on the same page, maybe just not in the depth that we might want to be.
That, that is correct. And I just want to also say that the planning commission meeting, the regular scheduled meeting, the regular work session is actually the second Thursday of the month, which is the 10th of September. The board of the city council actually will have their work session on September, on September, oh, on September the 14th. So as long as, and I'm doing this to keep in, to keep in line with the inauguration of the, of the moratorium. So I want, yes, so I'm wanting to make sure that if planning commission has their regularly scheduled meeting and puts this on that agenda, that you all will have the opportunity to review the text amendment as well as make any recommendations by the time it goes to council for their work session, which is September the 14th.
So, we won't be able to.
Let me make this.
We won't be able to if you're doing it like that because we won't have made a recommendation in terms of approval of a recommendation going to council. If they're going to meet on the 14th, we meet on the 10th.
Well, I, yes, you're right, Greg. And I think that what staff is, is attempting to do, is trying to do, is to speed that up, is to have this as a part of the special call meeting on the 3rd. And then that way, we will have a recommendation. But I think that this conversation is a good one because if we really go back and think about what was the impetus for the moratorium, and if the impetus for the moratorium is really about the health, safety, and welfare, as one of the speakers said, for the citizens, and I think that there was a session, the citizen hadn't even seen the, the text, the proposed text amendment, then I think that we're speeding this through. And my other, my other question or point is the city council can always vote to extend the moratorium. I mean, if we, if we in earnest would like to be very thoughtful and comprehensive about industrial spaces, spaces in the city, then I don't think that we wait this body or the city council to the 11th hour to try to, you know, rush to do a text amendment and then get it out to as many citizens as possible and then have especially all of those things. How long has the moratorium been?
I believe it's been in place since three, is it three months, Tony?
I think we had it 120 days, I think is what it was. So it was probably four months.
Four months, okay, four months.
You're absolutely right, Sean. I mean, city council could extend the moratorium. Some of the speakers who spoke tonight spoke very eloquently and provided all kinds of data and information that would seem to justify a city council considering the extension of the moratorium. And I do think what Kimberly is trying to do is good at starting the conversation now instead of the 11th hour on September 30th to see what are we going to do? Because you can't keep extending moratoriums indefinitely without showing that you're making some progress and trying to address the problem. And, and so, you know, it, it may make more sense. It certainly makes more sense from a legal standpoint when we really haven't had an opportunity to look at this text amendment and understand, you know, what it's trying to achieve and are there any unintended consequences. I personally haven't reviewed it. You know, to, to take a very considered approach to this. And at the same time, urge city council, I suppose, if, if that is what the Planning and Zoning Commission want to do, to extend the moratorium, to allow a meaningful process to happen.
Right.
That would be my preference.
Okay, and so there's a, there's a motion on the floor to recommend, to, to, to recommend approval of deferral, to defer this item to the September 3rd, 2020 special call meeting that was made by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Lovett?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we can dispose of that agenda item, and then we can make a new motion. And all in favor of that, sound aye.
Aye.
You want to have it on the 3rd, Joel?
Oh, no, 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 no. I thought we were making a motion.
Everyone on the stairway.
Okay.
We're at the very end.
Gotcha. No.
He nodded for a minute. It's getting late.
All in favor to defer to the special call meeting, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay.
Nay.
Okay, roll call.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Atkins?
I'm last, Tony.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Todd?
No.
Commissioner Fann?
No.
Commissioner Lovett?
No.
Commissioner Bell? Commissioner Miller?
You're on mute, Will.
No.
Okay. I think that she's left the meeting.
Commissioner Bryant? Commissioner Fields?
I'm changing mine to no. I said yes. Maybe I didn't understand quite.
Okay.
The noes have it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. At this time, commissioners, entertain another motion for this agenda item.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move this to our next regularly scheduled work session for September.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we move this agenda, defer this agenda item to our regularly scheduled work session for September. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
Discussion, discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Fann, discussion?
For you, Linda, will we have to re-advertise it for, since it's advertised now for the 23rd, will we have to re-advertise for our, when it comes on the, the regular agenda at the next meeting?
Okay, well, that was a question I had in terms of, I think, was it, Joel, did you make the motion?
I did, Linda.
Okay, is it your intent that it go to a work session and then it go to the next regularly scheduled meeting for a vote?
That's correct.
Okay, so yes, it will have to be re-advertised for whatever that date is after the work session for public hearing.
Did you say it will have to be re-advertised?
Well, if you want to have a public hearing on it, we should re-advertise it. We conducted a public hearing on something that the public really didn't know what they were-
Correct.
-commenting on. So he, as I understand it, Joel wants it to go to the next work session and then on to the, the regular meeting following that. And I would recommend advertising it for public hearing because the text amendment just wasn't really available to the public in time for them to make meaningful comment this evening on the text amendment itself. We still have time for advertising for the September meeting. Albert is nodding.
The September planning commission meeting is on September the 17th. And our advertising deadline, we have time, yes.
Yes, we've got time.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right, there's been a motion to defer this to our regularly scheduled September work session and then subsequent meeting made by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
Just one question before we go.
Okay, Commissioner Fields?
Yes, will the details of the, of the text amendment be distributed to everyone?
The text amendment, a staff analysis, and the actual text amendment has been distributed to the planning commission for this afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions, or concerns? The motion is to defer to our regularly scheduled work session and subsequent meeting made by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this agenda item is deferred to our regularly scheduled September work session and subsequent meeting. Our next agenda item or announcement, staff, do you have any announcements?
We don't. I think that these text amendments, that's, that's enough.
Great, you said enough. We don't. Period. We're good. Commissioners, do you have any announcements?
Mr. Chair, I don't have an announcement, but I would like to add Commissioner Maxwell to, to Commissioner Mitchell in recognition because I'm-
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
So much.
I forgot about, I forgot about Commissioner Maxwell because Commissioner Bart wasn't here this evening. Okay, any other announcements? I'm hungry. That's my announcement. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Fann, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we adjourn our August 28th, 2020 meeting. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. We out.